You know what, Elsie.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. May I have a motion to approve and accept the agenda as recommended? To be clear with the folks that are here, we have a, this first board meeting is a public hearing for the budget. The regular board meeting will start very shortly, I promise. So, I think, Eric, do you have something to read?
Yeah, just wanted to go through a couple things before everybody gets started within here. Right now, the proposed statement that was sent out is the highest rate that we'd possibly go. We do have until June, from a district standpoint, to lower the tax rate based on state law, based on state legislature, that whatever gets passed is within there. Within this first proposal, there's a lot of things that are unknown. Two big things that are unknown right now is the SSA rate, the state has not come out and set that, and they're also working through the property tax bill, which we've all heard a lot about, as to how that will affect this possible proposed tax rate and everything within there. So, just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
Mr. Brown, can you also just talk about the timeline that our district has to abide by with regards to submitting a budget and then the assumptions made for when our budget was submitted to the state?
Absolutely.
And the impact on what our community saw in those tax bills that we received a few weeks ago?
Yes. So, the timeline that we have is that we have to submit to the county auditor our first initial proposed, that's what this most recent proposed letter that was sent out to the community. So, we have to send that to them by March 5th. Assuming we have the SSA rate built in, we can usually have a pretty good hard tax rate as to what we're gonna project for this upcoming year. So, that's the first one we have to get to, and then we have to get the budget, the full tax rate and certified budget approved by March, or sorry, April 30th of each year. And so, hopefully, the SSA and everybody has done their due diligence to make sure everything is set at that point, so we can build everything out within that side of things. Then, based on whatever happens after April 30th, the district has until June 3rd to officially set the final tax rate for the community. That's based on legislation changes, or if we have other things going on within a district, the board has the ability to set that, but we have a max ceiling, I'll call it, for what we cannot go above. We can always go below there, up until the June timeframe, when we get the final assessment from the Department of Management. Built into this assumption was a 3% SSA. Not knowing what SSA was gonna be, the, I might get this right, the House side of legislature put out a 2.25 plus plus plus, I'll call it, because there's a lot of different one-time adjustments within there, that could have been up to a 2.65 one-time funding for school districts, so there's a lot of different nuances in there. So, I did put a 3% SSA rate, not knowing what's going on, knowing that we can always come down. And then, if it does go down to the 2% based on building our systems, would bring that property tax rate down to the 16.04, 16.05 rate that we had for this current year as well.
And because regardless of what the state supplemental aid is, because SSA hadn't been assigned prior to March 5th, we had to make an assumption at 3%, and then the board has control to bring it down to what we've been talking about of the $16.05, correct?
That is correct. The board has full control to go anywhere below the 16.06, excuse me, 16.06 that was proposed out to the community. We could, we just cannot go above there. The only way that we'd be able to go above is if legislation changes dictated the formula changes would go, push it above, but we could always tell them, no, we don't want to do that, we want to go lower, so then we can reassess the different property tax levies that we have out there.
And just for clarification, this tax rate is the same as, same tax rate as it was last year?
Right now, the ceiling, this year is 16.0481, I believe, I have to look at the numbers. This one is 16.06, so it's like a cent and a half a little higher than it was for this current year.
Yep.
Yep.
This public hearing is required for Iowa Code 24.2A as part of the district's certified budget. This, the notice provided to each resident shows the maximum total property taxes the district will adopt, as Eric said, or Mr. Brown said, as part of the certified budget, which will be adopted on by April 30th. The board secretary is hereby directed to enter any written comments into the record of this public hearing. For those of you in attendance, thank you for being here today. You may or may not have known you were attending a public hearing on the budget. We value your input and are interested in hearing your comments. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. Your public comments will be considered as part of the district's final budget decisions. As a reminder, board members are present to listen to and receive these comments. Board members will not engage in dialogue or respond to questions during this meeting, but may address issues that arise at a future board meeting. Just to clarify, when we start the regular board meeting, as soon as this is done, so if you came to speak about something other than the budget, now is not the time for you to talk. This is just public comment for folks who want to speak about the budget right now. So, we're ready to proceed. I don't have anybody on the sign-up sheet that's here to speak about the budget. Is there anybody who came to speak about the budget that would like to speak right now?
Can I make a few comments about taxes?
Yeah, come on up, please, to the microphone. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, that would be great.
My name is Mike Hatfield. I live here in Ankeny.
Okay.
So, one, I appreciate you taking the time to clarify how the taxes are gonna work. However, there is really no excuse for these taxes to go up anymore. I myself, as well as many other people, live on a fixed income. I know we just built a new school that's not gonna be at capacity for two years. Why we built that now instead of 10 years when it's gonna be at capacity makes no sense at all. It's gonna be outdated by the time we are at capacity. I don't understand that at all. That was a huge waste of tax money, as well as raising our taxes. Again, one cent on every $1,000, eh, may not be a lot, but it's a lot to a guy that lives on a fixed income. I get a military disability pension, that's what I live on. There's a lot of people like me that are. We honestly can't afford it. You guys are taxing us out of your neighborhoods. If that's what you want to do, keep doing it, because we're gonna have to leave. You guys' taxes are more here than most communities. Now, I went to the Polk County one, they're actually lowering their tax rate, the county is. I encourage you all to follow that path, because we are all getting extremely too taxed. So, hopefully, our government finds a way to reduce these taxes, and hopefully you guys see knowledge in the fact that we are too high already and go the other way. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak about the budget?
I just have a question.
Yes, please, come to the podium, please.
16%, 16.06% of what?
Would you mind sharing your name before?
Oh, yeah, my name's Long Dong. I live in Ankeny.
Okay. I'm gonna let, it's per $1,000, I believe, but I'm gonna let you clarify that, Mr. Brown.
Yes, that is the rate, it's $16.06, I'll round it for right now, per $1,000 of taxable valuation. So, I'm not gonna, I'll try to explain the equation, but essentially, your home is assessed by the county auditor. There's a rollback rate of like 54%, so whatever your assessed rate of your home is, less, or times that percentage, and then that's your taxable value, then it's $16 per that valuation is what we're assessing for taxes.
Oh, thank you, sir. You mean 54% of the property tax we pay goes to the school?
No. It's what the taxable valuation is. So, the way that, I'm gonna get this wrong, I'm gonna try to do the best I can, sorry. The way the formula works is that it's not the full assessed value, but it's a portion of your assessed value that's the taxable value. And then, the formula for the 16.05 is multiplied off of that rate, not the full rate, but whatever the rollback rate is. And this year, it's, I'm gonna get it wrong, but I believe it's like 48, 49% of your full assessed value. You'll have to talk with the county auditor on that side of things, to make sure, or sorry, county assessor, to make sure I have that correct.
Okay.
That should be what it is, but it's not a percentage.
I just picked up part of it. But anyway, I see we increased by about $5 million in total. We added 110 students, so each student about $45,000 to budget, right?
That's not exactly how it works.
Yeah. So, sir, do you have any comments on it? If you have some questions, additional questions you want answered, I'd ask you to submit those to the board and try to get somebody to answer them.
Yeah, yeah. I would want to listen more and ask more questions.
Yeah. The purpose for us is to really to get feedback from the community, not to clarify the tax.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Let's go to the 6:05 meeting at 6:10. May I have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with an amendment to item 6D, personnel report as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's begin with acknowledgements and recognitions. We didn't get a chance to talk about this, Dr. Pruitt. Do you want me to go?
Yes.
Okay. So, oh, somebody help me with the last name. Geiken? Gekin? Abigail? Oh, I'm so sorry, Abigail. Abigail Gekin, we're gonna assume that's her last name, an 11th grade student at Centennial High School, won the Gold Key Award from the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for her flash fiction piece, "An Illusion to the God of Death." This prestigious award was presented by the Bell and Blank Center for Gifted Education and Talent Development at the University of Iowa. The Ankeny Centennial High School Dance Team competed in sunny Orlando, Florida for Nationals in mid-February. Dancers took home a national runner-up in kick. Palm also took home the national runner-up. Both routines scored the highest points in Centennial history. Congratulations to the Centennial Dance Team. And tonight, we're thrilled to recognize the, once again, incredible generosity of our community partner, Hy-Vee. Through their steak dinner promotion held this January, they rallied to support our neighbors to raise funds to support our schools. This contribution of $1,121, is that the right dollar amount? $1,121, is a testament to the power of the community collaboration and the positive impact it has on our staff, students, and district as a whole. On behalf of the Ankeny Community School District, we want to thank both Ankeny High School, or not Ankeny High School, Ankeny Hy-Vee locations and everybody who participated, and your dedication helps us to continue enriching students and staff experiences in order for them to thrive. So, with that, we'd invite our team from Hy-Vee to come to the podium.
Well, thank you, everybody. We do appreciate you making time for us. Obviously, this is from January, so we're a little bit behind, but that was some slower months for us with the snow and the weather and everything, so we're hoping that we can kind of double this amount now with the nice weather. And then, just a reminder for everybody that don't know, we do have our gas pumps that we talked about, and we have the three different schools on them, and then we will take a portion, a penny per gallon for everything pumped from those pumps, and then we'll be having some check presentation with that too. And we're gonna really try to get the word out on that, because I don't know if you've been by the South Store lately, but we are full-blown construction right now on State Street. So, this is year three of this, and we're ready for it to be done, so hopefully it is. And starting Monday, the North Store is gonna be all tore up also, so we're gonna need as many people as we can into our, into our gas station to keep those gallons flowing, so we can make these checks even bigger. And that's our goal. We talked to our employees about it. Our goal is to make these checks big enough so that the corporate office calls us and says, hey, what's going on in Ankeny with the check presentation? So, that's our ultimate goal. So, we enjoy doing this, and I know we have, both stores have community people that they plan their meals on Thursdays, because they know that we are giving the $2 back. So, it definitely is catching on, and I look for this spring to be much bigger, especially with the weather. And I know Andrew does a better job than me, but he does get some of the different groups there at the store that actually help serve, and we've got a few lined up now too. So, we're actually getting some of the students and their organizations and the parents onsite that are helping, and I think that that shows a lot about the character of the students and stuff too, that they're willing to come out and do some legwork to even help the funds keep increasing. So, we're happy to do it, and we just, we hope to make the checks bigger.
Awesome. Well, it's the least I think our kids can do for the, you know, as part of the reciprocity here and what you do for our community. So, and it's a good opportunity for our kids to experience service.
Of course. Well, we hope to hire them at some point, too.
Yeah.
I just don't know if you're taking requests, but if one night can be a bratwurst night, I would be very happy about it.
Well, we can certainly talk about that, yeah.
I think the steak night, steak night brings in a little more money.
They'll hire a ring on a steak than a brat.
Yeah, for sure.
Awesome. Well, we'll invite you up, and we'll take a quick picture, I think, right?
Who gets to be the keeper of the real chuck?
Right there.
Right there, all right.
All right, moving on to communication from the public. On behalf of the board, I would like to invite, give me just a second, Kerry George, to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name. Thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes, so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. The board meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting, which will include your comments, will be maintained on YouTube for five years. Thank you for your support of our school district.
Thank you. My name is Kerry George, and I want to thank you for creating the environment in which the young people of Ankeny have opportunities to be successful in both academics and extracurricular activities. I'm here this evening to ask you to take action to restore an opportunity for young people in Ankeny to be successful in swimming and diving. To ensure that future success, I believe it's necessary that the Ankeny School District include construction of a swimming and diving facility in your future plans. In the 1980s, we had a group here in Ankeny that had the motto, "Ankeny has it all, except an indoor swimming pool." Fortunately, that effort culminated in the development of a swimming facility at what was then Ankeny High School. It was done in conjunction with the YMCA of Greater Des Moines, and it was very, very successful. Unfortunately, that facility was flooded a few summers back, and the Y never reopened. They were in some financial difficulties throughout the whole metro area, and they never reopened that facility. And that resulted in the closure of that pool. So, Ankeny did not have a facility for some period of time. The Ankeny High School Swimming and Diving Teams do now practice and compete at Trailpoint at DMAC. But the problem is, it doesn't allow for a youth swim program to develop that. Ankeny's been successful in a lot of extracurricular activities because they have youth programs that allow young people to develop. I've had the opportunity over the years to be involved as a parent's support for youth swim programs and all the way through to the high school. I've spent over 30 years officiating swimming at the youth level, the high school level, college level, and at the state level for swimming. The Ankeny Swim Teams have had less success recently because of that. At the past year, the girls' swimming and diving team placed 29th of 30 teams that scored at the state meet. The boys at their state meet placed 13th. The lack of a developmental program has really inhibited Ankeny's ability to be successful in swimming. We have youth programs for basketball, football, wrestling, all the other types of things, but nothing for swimming in Ankeny. And I would ask that you seriously consider having at one of the schools a swimming and diving facility for the youth of Ankeny to be able to develop in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about items in the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to information only. Item A, the technology policy implementation update. Dr. Pruitt?
So, beginning in, where, almost a year ago, the board and I began a discussion around the impact of technology on our students in the classroom, impact of technology on our students' behavior, their engagement in the classroom, and then just their preparedness for, once they leave our school district. And so, the board, who's working the slides?
Amy's trying.
And so, the board developed, we developed some goals together with regards to expectations for the 24, 25 school year. And part of that goal was for me to come to the board with a plan around discussing and considering what a technology, specifically a cellphone policy, would look like in our school district. But before I began that conversation with the community and with our staff, the board engaged our parents and community in a book study.
Can I just point out the irony of the technology not working for a technology update?
It's not lost. Try it now.
And so, yep, yeah, thank you. Strategic plan. And so...
You couldn't speak any slower.
Yeah, I was trying to talk slow. And so, with the, with our conversation, and I believe we had the conversation in May, the board and I, with developing goals, they were really intent on the conversations focusing around these three pillars, and believing that if we did something about technology, that it would have an impact on academics, it would have a positive impact on our staff's ability to do their job in the classrooms. And then, it reinforced the supportive environment that all of us want for our children. And we also believe that that was connected to our mission with regards to preparing all of our students and equipping them with the skills to flourish in a never-changing world. And it's not lost on us that in this technological world, that our kids are gonna be exposed after they leave us to a lot of technology and resources through technology. However, we believe, I believe, I won't put that on the board, I believe that there's some foundational work that we're responsible for in pre-K through 12, with preparing our children to be successful and be able to adapt to that ever-changing world. And so, over the summer, I presented some data connected, I believe, connected to impact of our students in the classroom and in how they were interacting with others. And so, we're going, today, we're going to share that information similar to what we did back in, during the summer last year. However, I wanted to provide a caveat for how I'd like us to look at this data with regards to the cellphone policy that was passed and the data that we're going to share. And so, everyone's familiar with these two words, correlation and causation. And so, we don't want to get caught up in that, within five months, the data that we're going to share, some of it, most of it is very positive. We don't want to make the mistake in that just that one policy had an impact on the data that we're going to see. We can't discount that, along with the policy that the board passed, our administrators, our teachers, our peer professionals, our custodians, our nutrition staff, everyone that is interacting with our students in our schools had a part in the data that you're going to see today. And so, the, and during our, my presentation last summer with this policy, I never said that this is the silver bullet for what we were looking for with regards to our strategic plan and our mission. This is one lever that is supported by professional, dedicated educators in our classrooms, in our schools, and in our district office to support our students improving academically every single year. And so, I wanted us to keep that in mind and not just point to the cellphone policy, because then we devalue the work that our staff are doing in the classrooms. However, as we look at this data, I think, for me, as I look at it, I have questions, and I think it's my job and my team's job to begin asking questions on what do we need to be doing to begin asking questions on what do we need to be doing differently in preparation for the '25-'26 school year, connected to technology, but then also, and even probably more important, connected to the curriculum that we're delivering, how we're going about teaching, how we're going about engaging our students and our parents every single day. And then, there's another stakeholder that has caused some of the data that we're going, the positive data that you're going to see today, is our parents. And so, now, we got policy, we've got district staff, and we got our parents. And to me, that's the ultimate meaning of a community-school district, where our community identified an issue. They asked our school board to come up with a solution or at least a lever to help our kids. The board did that, and now, our staff are working towards helping our kids manage their technology, those cellphones, their Chromebooks, but then also expose them to really rigorous and relevant academics in the classroom, but then also balancing that with the technology that we need them to be prepared to use when they leave us. And so, I'm going to turn it over to, and I kind of slowly, I reviewed our timeline with regards to the goal setting, with the book study, our presentation of data, the surveys that went out to our parents, our students, and our staff, and then the reading of our, the proposed policy, and then getting feedback from our administrative team with regards to, they really wanted to make sure that they were able to be successful in its implementation. We made some refinements to the final policy that was approved in September, and then we began implementing it in October. And so, I'm going to turn it over to, I'm going to tag in Dr. Dipmar and Dr. Hawke, who are going to review some of the data points that we reviewed last summer.
So, I first want to start out by, I feel like we need to give a big shout out to our administrators, our teachers, our students because we believe that this data is a direct result of their efforts and all of their hard work. So, I want to make sure that we value the extra effort that the teachers especially have put in in enforcing this policy in their classroom. And I do believe it's because of their efforts that we're seeing these outcomes. And so, as Dr. Pruitt said, we're going to share a data set with you, although we don't feel like these results are because of this one policy, there's potential for connection. And these data sets are the same ones that you saw in the summer. So, we wanted to bring them back in front of you since we implemented this policy in October. So, tonight, we'll talk about academics, attendance, behavior, and then share some of the reporting that we've found through our TIPS system. And then, we'll come back to you in the summer because we are in the middle of collecting some survey data, especially our students' well-being survey and our measurable results assessment through Leader and Me. Those surveys are currently being administered. As well as, you know, we're taking ISAS next week, and then we'll end our year with the FastBridge data. So, we'll come back to you and bring some future data that we could, think that could also be connected to the implementation of this policy. So, we want to start with academic data. And here, you see a comparison of grade, the grade distribution for our eighth through 12th graders, because they still receive letter grades from fall of last year to fall of this year. This represents our core courses in these four areas, so it does not represent our electives. So, anecdotally, we're hearing from teachers that they're seeing less distractions in the classroom as an effect of this policy. So, this data may, really kind of makes me ask the question of what's causing this increase? Why are we seeing an increase of more passing grades? Is it because of this? Or is it due to increased instructional strategies and engagement and things that are happening in the classroom? So, while we're excited about the increase in these passing grades, I'm not sure that we can make a direct correlation, obviously, to this policy, but we are pleased with the positive impact. We are also seeing a decrease in failing grades. You can see there, our eighth and ninth grade, as well as our 10th and 12th grade, from semester to semester. Again, this includes, the failing grades includes all courses, core and elective, where the grade distribution was just the core. For attendance, we have seen a decrease in the percentage of students who are chronically absent from fall of last year to fall of this year. As you know, there was a new law that went into place on July 1 that I believe has impacted our attendance in a positive way. So, again, what can we learn from this? One of the questions that I have is, you know, what's instruction look like? What's more engaging in our classrooms? How are we getting kids to engage? What are we presenting to them so that it's increasing their attendance at school? Again, the new law and this policy may have contributed to that. We also collect data on what we call major office referrals. So, a major office referral is defined as a behavior that meets a commonly-defined threshold, and it's managed by the office or by administration. So, when a behavior meets that definition, it's automatically referred to the office. So, we have a continuum of behavior responses that we use, and one of them is from, for the misuse of technology. And that was created to align with board policy and also support have consistency across our system when responding to behavior. Just keep in mind that our sixth and seventh grade, this policy really didn't change what their practice already was. They already asked their students to have cellphones put away all day. That was not new for them. It was a change for our eighth and ninth graders. They do have their cellphones put away all day. Our 10th through 12th graders, we do allow them to have them out at lunch. And then, of course, if they have an open period where they leave campus, they do have access to their phones.
Amy, does misuse of technology include the misuse of a Chromebook?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We also collect it on minor office referrals. So, minor is, we would define as it's teacher-managed. So, a teacher can write a minor referral and to obviously give feedback to students on their behaviors with the hopes of reteaching and addressing that behavior. We did not have a minor office referral on misuse of technology last year. We added that this year, I should say, for cellphone use, right? So, teachers, on the continuum of behavior responses, they give warnings, several warnings in the classroom first. They can write a minor before it becomes a major and it goes to the office. So, I believe this large increase in minors is due to a better data collection as a result of this policy. With that, Dr. Hawke.
Before we move on to Dr. Hawke, I want to remind the board that when we introduced the continuum of behavior, we saw a significant increase in reporting. I believe that that's very similar to the reporting on the minor offenses for technology. And so, I anticipate that that will continue to decrease the same way we saw our behavior data decrease from '22 to now.
Yeah, anytime you introduce a new tool or a new process for collecting behavior data, you often see an uptick because we're probably reporting more accurately than we were prior to.
That's what I was going to say. Like, that number actually didn't alarm me because it looks like everybody is enforcing it in their classrooms, which is what we want to see.
Which was a concern of the board.
Yes.
We wanted to make sure that it was consistently.
Yeah, so really, it'll be baseline data for us. And then, as we look at it next year, we'll have some comparison data.
So, what we're looking at here is the number of cellphones that were collected. As we work through the continuum of response that Dr. Dipmar just spoke about, if there are repeated issues of violating the expectations for cellphones, those will get collected and stored in the office. Couple of things to think about as you look at this. Number one, like we already said, we have eighth graders in particular, but eighth and ninth graders that are coming out of schools where the expectation has always been that the phones are not out. Our 10th through 12th graders have lived a different experience, and so, it's not really surprising that we see those numbers be different. When you think about October, we started this on October 22nd, so that 85 was probably the last week of one month, which is probably why that number's a little bit different. What's really interesting, I think, too, is when you look at January, coming back, we have two major transitions there. One, coming back from winter break, and then starting a different set of classes for second semester halfway through the month, so resetting those expectations, which, of course, is always important. Another thing to think about is, you know, each one of those collected phones is time spent with students, time spent communicating home. It is, when you compare this and the numbers that we're just looking at with office referrals, has been a lot of extra time for our assistant principals in particular working with students on establishing these expectations. And then, TIPS reports. And every time I have the opportunity to talk about TIPS, I want to remind folks that this is a completely anonymous reporting tool that we've used for several years. We have it featured prominently on the website. And so, it's a really great tool for us to help make sure that students and staff and anyone that comes to Ankeny schools are safe. These are reported events, not necessarily founded events. So, we tell people all the time, if you see something that's concerning, please report it. We would much rather investigate something that doesn't turn out to be dangerous than have something dangerous happen and we don't know about it. But it is very interesting when you, when you look at, especially the bullying and cyberbullying difference year over year. Again, whether that is caused, we can't know by cellphone policy in particular, but that is a significant decrease regardless of what's causing that, the good work that our students and staff are doing throughout the year. But with the, with the exception of the threat to harm being fairly similar year over year, we had seen decreases in those major TIPS reports this year so far. So, that is the end of our data presentation. Again, we will come back with additional data pieces later in the year, but we would be happy to entertain questions at this time.
Thank you. Directors, questions?
I had a question. How are you continuing to connect, make that parent-home connection so that the parents can continue to set the expectations for students? You know, I think about the 245 distractions that took away from student learning and all those students. How are you continuing to keep that connection back at home for parent self-support at school?
Yeah, I think all of the success is because of the partnership between school and home, right? We can't do this without parents. I think that connection happens in many ways. One, it's just through common teaching of expectations. When they change courses at semester, right? It's through the syllabus, it's through communication from the teacher to the parent. I think on these individual bases, when a student has to lock up their phone for a day, it's through phone calls and meetings and conversations. So, I think between those one-on-ones and any kind of school-wide communication that they do, all are attributed to this data.
Other questions?
Have we asked any feedback from teachers? Just anecdotal, do we collect any other type of feedback? Will that be done as we then reevaluate the policy moving forward? Possibly making changes? Like, what's the, are we collecting data in any other way?
So, not formally. We're five months in, and so, I think that the Culture Amp survey can be, could potentially be leveraged to that end, but that won't be, I don't think we're going to administer Culture Amp until the fall of the '25-'26 school year. And I think, again, those are some of the questions that we're asking ourselves. You know, do we push out a survey for our staff to, similar to what we did last summer, to assess, you know, their understanding of implementation and, you know, any other changes that may be needed moving forward for the next school year?
I mean, we all have anecdotal, I have a senior, and I mean, I have anecdotal stories. I'm sure anyone who has a middle schooler or a high schooler, you know, my daughters, when they're done with work in their class, they're, they play cards or they play something instead of all getting on their phones. So, it's little things like that, but they add up to make a difference, so.
Other questions or thoughts or reactions to the data?
I just appreciate the feedback. I've been looking, waiting for something, you know, some feedback, some data since we've made this policy. So, thank you for this. I'm looking forward to the next round, I guess. I just wonder, you know, what other, what other data you're going to throw in there? You know, for next time.
Anything else?
I just want to make a quick statement of that I know, as a board, we really discuss of what kind of extra load this was going to add on the teachers, and it seems like they really stepped up. And so, I think I really appreciate that our district has teachers that are, and staff that are going to support these kids and students for their success. So, I think that's what this really shows.
Yeah, it feels a little bit like an onion to me. Like, this is one layer that we're maybe peeling back. I mean, I, it'd be awesome if our achievement data mirrored, you know, mirrored this data, but that might be a fool's errand, right? But it's one barrier we think we're removing in the way to help our kids, you know, coming back to that strategic plan, right? What's the supportive environment? We're supporting our teachers by supporting, you know, them hearing. We don't want kids with cellphones. Feel free to, you know, take them and address them in your classroom, please, so that we can really get to that first pillar, which is positive learning outcomes for our students. And this just feels like one layer that's going to help us get closer. But, you know, I'm not, not trying to draw any conclusions from the data that may not be there. I understand it's a complex system, like we talked about in our work session. But I do think when you can look across multiple data sets and see consistent, positive improvements, I mean, yeah, I would expect the minor infractions to go up. That made me happy. That means we're implementing the policy, right? It's only for me a positive to draw from all of that data. I had, I had emailed Dr. Pruitt on Monday, or Saturday morning. He and I are presenting at the National Association of School Boards this weekend in Atlanta on our cellphone implementation policy. And I, after I saw that board slide deck, I emailed him. I said, "We've got to put this data in our slide deck. This is awesome to be able to present and share this information." So, just, I know you were worried that it was going to be a tough road. And I think to us, at least from our level, it's felt like it's gone as well as we could have possibly asked, and that, you know, that's because of your leadership, and then, obviously, the leadership of our building principals and our teachers in implementing it, and our families, especially those who participated in the book study, the support of our community partners. It's just been a lift on the part of a lot of people. And so, I'm looking forward to continuing to see the success of this journey. So, thank you. All right. Let's move on. All right. Item B is Facilities and Finance Committee. Anybody have any questions, sir?
No.
Policy Committee Minutes from February. Item D, we've got our monthly financial update. I, I'm just going to be vulnerable here. Is this Public Budget Comparison Report new? I really liked it.
I checked it. We got it last month, too.
Your mic's off.
It's new.
Your mic's off.
We got it last...
Month. I was checking, Eric, because I do like it, so thank you.
Yes, this is basically a report to be, here's our certified budget for this current year and how we're doing. So, then, we know if we're going to be coming for a budget amendment here in May.
I really appreciate it. It is a little bit easier to chew on than some of the other ones.
But I was just going to say, it's very easy to read and understand.
My question for you in terms of percent of published, I never know how to gauge that because I know that sometimes we spend a lot of money upfront on things. So, like, should 80% worry me or not? So, do you have any suggestions for how we gauge that?
It's a year-by-year basis. I wish I could say, yes, we're going to follow this part of it. But for this one right here in particular, the 80% was because we closed out two funds. We had a lost fund for our SAVE that we had two different things, so we moved it from Fund 33, Fund 35 to Fund 33. And then, also, we had a separate debt fund for our revenue bonds that we put, closed out. So, that's all, just the movement of funds between, just to clean up those different things within there. So, it's not additional cash that we put out there, but just the cleanup of those funds to make things more succinct and systematic. So, we will have to do a budget amendment because of this part of it, but it's just the movement of cleaning up those funds from going from two down to one, but not additional cash that we had spent from what we originally published.
I don't know that I've ever had a year where we didn't have to do a budget amendment.
Very true.
It's just the, how it gets run, right? Any questions about this? All right, any questions on item E, the donation receipts? One thing I just appreciate about this is making this public. I don't think I ever had any sense of what this flow-through of donations looked like for a variety of purposes. So, again, I just, you know, we may never talk about it, but I appreciate the visibility on it from our perspective. All right, item F, student fees. Dr. Pruitt, do you want to speak to this? Or have anybody just going to talk to us about this?
Mr. [inaudible].
Mr. Brown.
It's the Mr. Brown Show.
Okay, so we had worked through a bunch of people in the district in my computer. There we go. Sorry, just trying to pull it up here so that I can see it as well. And we worked through a bunch of different departments and tried to figure out, okay, where should our fees be set at to make sure that, one, we're comparable within the market and we're figuring out how to, we have expenses coming through that we can make sure those things are covered. So a couple of different updates we had within here, worked with the band and music secondary teachers to making sure that the different things can get covered. So if they need additional instruments, if they need additional cleaning for band uniforms and those different things, to make sure that's covered and that's the difference in the fee from going from 50 to 75. That was a recommendation from them directly. We've had a, unfortunately, a bunch of not sufficient fund return checks coming through. And so trying to get a handle on that side of things so that we can get more comparable within the market and how people are doing it in the private industry as well. So hopefully that will get cleared up.
Can I ask, do we get charged for that?
We do, yes.
What do we get charged for that?
Thirty dollars.
Okay. I just want to name it, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm not charging a fee because I want to charge a fee.
Correct, absolutely. We worked with Darren, Dr. Hogg, and figuring out our transportation routes for people that want to pay for those. They did a 3% escalator in that because that's what we have with our new escalation for student as well. And then also working with our A.D.s and figuring out where our ticket prices should be. I believe the C.I.M.L., sorry.
C.I.M.L.
Thank you, still learning all this stuff. And that's what they're going to be going to for this upcoming year for the league-wide.
That was going to be, my question is, how do we generate the decisions around what we charge for gate fees? But the conference works together to set that? Okay, okay. Yeah, that is good context. Okay, thank you. Any questions from directors about student fees?
Nope. No, thanks.
And so I believe next board meeting, we vote on those. Yep. All right. Item G, Board Member Committee Participation Reports. Anybody have anything to share here?
Yep. I had, earlier, we had Facility and Finance. And again, Eric covered the certified budget. I think I, fifth, sixth time I had that report. So between our one-on-ones and everything, I felt pretty, pretty good about it. So thank you. And then, Cyac Meeting, Dr. Pruitt, again, presented the 10-year plan. So that was pretty good. So feeling good, feeling informed.
You learn something new every time you hear it.
I do. I learned so much, so. So I got a lot of repeat information, but it was all well-informed.
I had Ankeny School Foundation Board Meeting last week, so save the date. We have another event. Wednesday, July 23rd is our annual golf outing. It's a fantastic opportunity that helps raise the book of our funds that go towards supporting the students and the teacher grants that go forth through the year. There's also a campaign that they're working on. It's our 25th birthday, so we've got some fun ways that we'll be engaging the community and opportunity for people, everyone to give back and make a difference and help reach some fun, exciting goals with that as well. I also participated in my board walk. I went to Southeast on Friday afternoon. So thank you, Dr. Pruitt and Principal Idair. Got to walk around and visit a slew of classrooms for that. So, and policy this week.
Policy on Thursday. Thanks, Sarah. Anybody else?
Joy and I just had TQ this afternoon. We had to leave a little bit early, but continuing to work through the teacher evaluation process and getting feedback on the different components of that and the survey data that they had from the different constituents that they had worked with on that.
We looked, it was principal feedback, principals' feedback today that we looked at.
Can you just say what TQ is for?
Teacher, like professional development.
Yeah.
Teacher quality.
Yeah. Teacher quality, yep.
Anyone listening might not know what that is. I don't have a meeting report, but I visited three schools since the last meeting. I went to Crocker and saw their Best Buddies program. They were on a leprechaun hunt throughout the library. And then they crafted homes for their leprechauns out of a variety of different art supplies. So that was pretty, pretty cool. And then the next day, I went to Northeast and they got to see the talent show. I just want to tell our middle school and high school music programs that you've got a lot of talent coming your way out of Northeast because there were some really good singers and dancers there. And then this morning, I was at Terrace and the Polk County Conservation was there doing presentations on a variety of different things. The woman had to do the presentation over and over again as the classes rotated through. But she did a great job and they were all engaged. And I got to see the classrooms and talk to the principal there just about the needs at our preschool. So I'll have more coming up, but those are the three I got done.
Anybody else? Awesome. All right, last one here under information only. Item H, contracts and agreements at the building level. Do we have any questions here? All right, let's move on to old business. Item A, may I have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Questions about contracts?
Just on that Parent Square, is that replacing a bunch of different platforms? Because it looked like there was a lot of great stuff in that contract.
Yeah, currently, we use a product called Final Site, and it is replacing that product. Parent Square Acquired Remind, so you might be familiar with the Remind app. And it's really just scaling up to offer somewhere of their services. But one thing that I'm really excited about, that you'll be excited about, too.
The translation?
It goes beyond the standard Google Translate option, and they've acquired a higher license with Google, and they do contextual Google translation. So it's not a word by word. It's a sentence and paragraph taken into context, which will really help.
Yes.
Offer a better product.
I may or may not have gone to their website, saw who some of their customers were, went to one of those schools and played around with that. So I just didn't know if it was replacing, like, it looked like there was a part where you could pay fees or it looked like it had the capabilities of some other apps that we're using. So are we?
It does. So we primarily purchased it to support with our mass communications, which is email, text, phone calls, a mobile app, and then our two-way messaging, which is also texting. That being said, there are more services available through the platform. So we'll be working with our principals and our building secretaries and, you know, our largest app as well to see if they might want to use some of these services and if there's any cost savings. But we're, after tonight's meeting, we'll have to get started on that implementation work to launch it this summer.
Because I'm sure if you could get everything down to one app, parents would be very appreciative.
Our technology department would also be very appreciative.
Thank you.
I had a question on the World Languages Agreement. So just a question for clarification and understanding. It says year one print materials and then online access for five years. So is that saying that we're only having print materials just for the first year and then subsequent years, it's all online? Or just trying to understand some context with that and for what grade levels that'd be for?
So the World Language is under curriculum review. This will be implemented next year. This is for grades six through 12. We are entering a multi-year agreement, so there's a one-year cost upfront. And then we, six-year agreement, I believe. And so we'll be billed annually each year until the terms of the agreement. So what we're purchasing will be the same for every year during the lifecycle of that curriculum. So we'll always have print materials or digital access.
Okay.
It's just, they're just invoicing us on a yearly basis.
Okay, so there'll be print materials throughout that six-year contract, not just year one? Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item B, Public Hearing for Prairie Ridge Middle School Fire Alarm Project. Are there any written or oral comments regarding the public hearing for the Prairie Ridge Middle School Fire Alarm Project? Okay, let's move on to item C. May I have a motion to approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of the Prairie Ridge Middle School Fire Alarm Project as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Any questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, are there any written or oral comments regarding the public hearing for the Prairie Ridge Middle School Chiller Replacement Project? You guys didn't know you were going to have so much chance to talk to the boards. All right, assuming there are no comments, moving on to item B. May I have a motion to approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Prairie Ridge Middle School Chiller Replacement Project as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, are there any written or oral comments regarding the public hearing for the 2024, 2025 school calendar amendment? All right, assuming there are none, I'll move on to item G. May I have a motion to approve the amended 2024, 2025 school calendar as recommended?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear about that one at home. Motion passes. Moving on to item H, may I have a motion to approve and accept the policies, second and final reading as recommended? Policies are for immediate implementation upon second and final reading?
Motion.
Second. Any questions about these policies? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item I, may I have a motion to affirm the policies approved and implemented on March 10th, 2025 as recommended?
Motion.
Second. And this is, this is the third time through. This is the last one, right? Okay. Any questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to new business. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of general obligation school refunding bonds series 2021A dated April 7th of 2021, approving an escrow agent agreement and levying a tax for fiscal year 2026 for the redemption of the general obligation school refunding bonds series 2021A dated April 7th, 2021 as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Any questions here?
Do we typically, have we done this in the past? I'm just.
Yep, we've done this every single year. So this is prepayment of our outstanding debt. And it just doesn't increase anything on our current, our proposed tax rate that we had earlier.
Perfect. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's move on to item B. Now may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of general obligation school bonds series 2018 dated June 28th, 2018, and levying a tax for fiscal year 2026 for the redemption of general obligation school bonds series 2018 dated June 28th, 2018 as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Exact same thing, just different bonds. Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The public hearings never stop. All right. Item C, may I have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing for the East Elementary Toilet Renovations Project for April 14th, 2025 at 5:00 PM as recommended?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, may I have a motion to approve the 2025, 26 ratified PPME agreement as recommended?
Motion.
Second. Any questions here?
Not a question, just a thank you to everyone at the negotiating table. It seemed to have gone rather well, so I just appreciate everyone's effort in that.
Yep.
And for those in the audience, do you want to give PPME what it stands for and what group of?
I don't exactly know what it stands for, but I know that it.
Public professionals.
Who encompasses?
Public professionals and maintenance employees, I think.
And it would include our classifieds.
Custodians.
Paraprofessionals.
Food service, paraprofessionals, secretaries. Anyone else?
Print shop.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thanks for the team effort there, guys. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Last one, item E, may I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget publication and set the date for a public hearing for budget on April 14th, 2025 at 5:00 PM as recommended?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.